Thank you for coming to the Grand Forks Committee of the Whole. Today is Monday, March 14th, 2022. It is 5:30 PM. And I'd like to start with one call to order in 1.1. Ms. Dorset, would you please?
Certainly.
Weigel? Weigel? Dockler? Here. Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Cavani? Sandy? Inveen?
Here.
We have four. Thank you. Before we move on to item number two, discussion items, I would just like to let everyone know tonight is a council of the whole meeting. And so while we very much invite and welcome members and comments, per our procedure for council of the whole, we won't be doing that tonight during this meeting, but I do very much invite you to submit your comments by email. You certainly can stop us at the grocery store, or you can give us a call as well, or you are welcome to attend next Monday's meeting at the city council to give citizen comments on the record. So item number two, discussion items, 2.1.
2.1 is the request for a transfer of Class 1 general on and off sale alcoholic beverage license from LC and ME Properties doing business as Diamond Lounge to BLCD MND, which will also be doing business as Diamond Lounge. And I can go up there and speak to the item.
All right. So councilperson, Dockler, and members of the committee, the finance department has received application for the transfer of the Class 1 general on off sale alcoholic beverage license from the LC and ME, which is doing business as the Diamond Lounge, to BLCD MND, located at 1607 Demers Avenue. LC and ME Properties has held the Class 1 for several years. They have decided to sell their business and have notified us to wish to transfer their license over to the BLCD MND Incorporated. They do plan to keep the name under the Diamond Lounge and keep operations similar to the prior owner. They have paid the application fee. This transfer does require inspection approval of various departments along with the payment of associated fees. It also requires city council approval to move this forward. But with that, I would just recommend that we move this forward for approval, of course, subject to the approval of the various departments. And we do have representatives here if you should have any questions.
Councilman Weigel makes a motion, and Councilman Weber seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimously. 2.2?
2.2 is 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Good evening. This is a very easy item for us tonight. The only action requested is to schedule a public hearing for next Monday. This is the annual report that's due to HUD every year. It will be due on April 1st, but it is just a report of past action. I'm not asking for authorization of anything. So certainly happy to stand for any questions, and there is a draft available on the web for anybody who wants to look at it.
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Mock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
It passes unanimously. 2.3?
Award bid 2021-1, the Greenway mowing and herbicide.
Good evening, councilperson Dockler and members of council. You have before you the 2022 bid results for mowing and herbicide services for the Greenway. You'll notice that I'm asking that we bid it to the higher bidding contractor, partially because the other bid was not complete. It was an incomplete package, but also they demonstrated that they don't have the capacity to do the work. Any questions?
Move approval.
Motion by Weigel. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Second by Weber. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 2.4?
Award bid number 2021-3, mosquito control chemicals and equipment, and declare equipment surplus.
Good evening, Ms. Dockler and members of councils. That time of year again, and we're putting together the bids for mosquito control. We have a couple of items on there for surplus, so we're recommending to sell them on govdeals.com and move forward. So I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions?
Move approval.
I'll second. It's fun to be talking about things getting ready for summer. Yeah, it's great.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And 2.5?
Create district for project number 8400, district number 760, reconstruct Oak Street from 17th to 24th Avenue South.
Good evening, Councilmember Dockler, committee members. It's great to be here this evening. Engineering has a few items tonight, and we'll try to keep it brief and keep things moving, but as usual, please ask questions if you have them. This first project is a new project, has not been presented before the committee previously. It is also the last of engineering's large reconstruction projects for this construction season. This project reconstructs seven blocks of Oak Street from 17th Avenue South to 24th Avenue South. The existing road was built in the 1950s. It's a very thin layer of asphalt over clay, which is about as minimal pavement as you can get, and it's in really rough shape, probably should have been replaced a long time ago. So we are recommending reconstruction of that section. It'll also add some additional street lighting and improve some of the drainage issues with the catch basins there. This project being a reconstruction would be subject to the city's 80/20 cost share policy, so 80% would be funded from Fund 4815. That amount, the city cost share, would be about $1.6 million. The remaining 20% would be special assessed to the benefiting properties. The overall construction estimate for this is roughly $2 million. So tonight, we are recommending creation of the special assessment district and approval of the engineer's report and directing to prepare plans and specifications. So I'd be glad to answer any questions about this.
Do we have any questions from councilmembers?
I do, quickly, if I may. The folks in that neighborhood deserve a good roadway, and they don't have that right now. And I understand, I believe I understand why we use concrete in our area, soils, weather, et cetera. But I'm guessing this roadway would not have a lot of truck traffic. Would there be savings? Is there any justification for not going concrete? Or could you talk to that quickly?
Sure. Councilmember Weber, we did look at various alternatives to include milling and overlaying the existing asphalt. That's not a good idea because with a thin layer, it just pulls up all of it, and we end up reconstructing. We could reconstruct with asphalt or concrete, and the thickness of that is variable, but if you look at structural equivalence, there's really no cost savings to put down new asphalt. And with asphalt, we'll be there in another 15 years doing a mill and overlay. So we like to go concrete because it's a long-term solution. It's most cost-effective.
Thanks for letting me ask. I'm ready to move.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Weber. Is there a second? By Mr. Weigel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 2.6?
Plans and specs for project 8401, district number 761, reconstruct South 12th Street from Park Drive to 25th Avenue South.
Thank you. This project met the city council back on February 21st, where the special assessment district was created. Since then, engineering, we are finalizing our plans and specifications. We confirmed our cost estimate of roughly $1.7 million. We previously recommended an 80/20 cost share, not just on the paving, but also on the mainline sewer replacement, storm sewer replacement. We're continuing that recommendation for 80/20 cost share, just given the fact that that's new infrastructure and it's a little bit costly. We think this brings the cost down to something which would be considered more normal for a reconstruction project. We will be holding a public input meeting for this project tomorrow night, so we hope to get some participation, some feedback. But given the first phase of this project two years ago, we had a lot of positive input, so we're expecting something similar tomorrow. So with that, we're recommending approval of plans and specifications tonight and proceeding with advertising for bid.
Does council have any questions?
A quick comment. Since we created this fund, the quality of the roads across our city have improved drastically, and I'll move approval here.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Inveen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 2.7?
Plans and specs for project number 8469, district 765, reconstruct South 20th Street from 20th to 24th Avenue South.
Thank you. This project also met city council on February 22nd, where a special assessment district was created. Since then, we held a public input meeting last week, Tuesday. Had four residents within the district participate in that, plus we've received two phone calls. All the feedback so far has been positive. It's just typical questions about how much will I be assessed? Why am I being assessed? What's the timing of the project? The impact to my home? Those type of questions. So overall, support was very good for this. We did validate the total construction estimate of roughly $1.3 million. The cost share that was recommended was 80/20, 80% funded by city share from Fund 4815, and the remaining 20% special assessed. So we feel we're at a point where we recommend approval of plans and specifications and advertising for bid.
Does council have any questions or comments? Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Weigel. Second?
Thank you.
By Councilman Inveen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved unanimously. 2.8?
2.8 is the bid award for project number 8420, 2020 water main replacement.
Thank you. Last week Thursday, we held a bid opening for the 2022 water main replacement project. This project was bid as a base bid plus two alternates. The base bid was roughly four blocks of water main replacement, and each alternate was an additional block of water main replacement. We honestly didn't know what the bidding environment was going to look like, given cost of materials and those type of things, but we were pleased that bids came in actually 16% under the engineer's estimate. So in consulting with the Water Works Director, we're recommending award of alternates A and B in addition to the base bid. We did receive two bids. We could not open up one of those bids due to not providing a valid contractor's license, but the single bid was, as I said, 16% under the engineer's estimate. So we are recommending award to United Crane and Excavation in the amount of $994,215.30.
Does council have any comments or questions?
Move approval.
Do we have a second? Councilman Weigel?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
If we're 16% under, are we better off doing a change order and get item C, D, and E in there as well if the water main needs to be replaced and we're 16% under at this point?
I would agree if we had items C, D, and E, but this is actually probably double what we would usually do as far as water main replacements. We usually target about a half million dollars per year, and this turned out to be a great bidding year, surprisingly. So we've kind of maxed out what we have designed at the moment.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Weigel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 2.9?
Bid award for project number 8471, 2022 industrial park CPR.
Thank you. This project replaces several concrete panels along South 48th Street in the industrial park. The ride quality in South 48th Street's real rough, and this addresses some of the worst areas. We had a bid opening last week Thursday. We opened three bids. The low bid was by United Crane and Excavation in the amount of roughly less than $56,000. This is 13% below the engineer's estimate, so we're very pleased with that bid, and we're recommending award to United Crane and Excavation in the amount of $55,635.
Any comments or questions by council? Is there a motion? Councilman Weigel, a second? Councilman Weber? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 2.10?
City Hall renovation phase two, Engineering Department furnishing request.
Thank you. Back on February 7th, the city council approved the phase two of Grand Forks City Hall renovation. This is just the next step in that process for furnishings for the engineering department. We've had a small team of members from three affected departments working with two different companies to identify the best furnishings value to the city, and we are recommending an award to Norbees. They have a North Dakota state contract, so it's been competitively bid. And we're bringing this request tonight simply because it's above the department head's approval authority. The other departments are approving theirs within their authority level. So this evening, we're requesting city council approve the engineering department's request for furnishings not to exceed $205,000.
Any questions or comments from council? Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Inveen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved unanimously. 2.11?
Amendment to task order for project number 8231, upgrade list station number 12 and number 13.
Good evening, councilperson Dockler and committee members. This project, 8231, is for the upgrades of list station 12 and 13. The project was awarded to ICS and Fusion Automotive on April 12th. Due to delays in material and supply, we allowed the contract to install one pump at a time rather than simultaneously due to the aging of the pumps. This resulted in needing more time for construction inspection and administration. Staff is looking for recommendation for approval of amendment number one for WFW Engineering for Construction Administration Services in the amount of $34,000.
Any questions or comments from council?
I'll move approval.
Approval by Councilman Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Inveen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 2.12?
The bid award for project number 8366, mill and overlay, Mill Road, Gateway to North Washington.
Good evening, Councilmember Dockler and members of the committee. We ended up opening bids for this project on Friday last week at the DOT bid opening. Low bid came in at about 752,000. We had a total of three bids. This bid came in approximately 5% over our engineer's estimate. Because this project includes federal funds, this project does not include special assessments, so we're anticipating about $480,000 in federal share, as well as a city share of $490,000 for this project. It's a typical mill and overlay project. This is just trying to buy some time for Mill Road. That road's seen some better days, so this is trying to buy some time for that road. With that, staff is recommending awarding the contract to Strata in the amount of $752,213.14 and approve any necessary budget amendments.
Yes, councilman?
I have a question, if I may. Mr. Crank, I should know this, but a city's a complicated entity. This road is outside of the city, much of it, right?
That is no longer the case, Councilmember Weber. That was actually annexed. There was a portion of it that was outside of city limits, and that would have been the portion from Columbia Road to North Washington, but that was annexed last fall.
It was annexed last fall. And if it had not been annexed, what would our situation have been?
If that road would not have been annexed, then Mill Road would not have been considered a classified street, so it would not have been eligible for federal funding. So if we were to go in to do a project, we likely would have had to have special assessed that project, and it would have been a higher cost for the city on that.
For the city and for the property owners in that area?
That is correct.
There are benefits to annexation, yes. I'll move approval.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Weigel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 2.13?
Bits for city project number 8243, chip and seal, North Fifth Street from Second Avenue North to Gateway Drive.
Thank you. Once again, this was another DOT bid opening that opened last Friday. Overall, we received a total of three bids. The low bid was from Asphalt Surface Technologies in the amount of about $555,000. This is another project that includes a fair amount of federal and state funding. This includes chip seal on North Fifth, and there are also a couple of other associated projects, which includes a chip seal on Gateway Drive, I believe from 55th going west quite a ways. Overall, the city share of that $555,000 is approximately $5,600. Staff is recommending that we concur in the award, and we concur in the award to the low bidder of Asphalt Surface Technologies in the amount of $555,000, $70.56.
Move with enthusiasm. Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second with a question.
Yes, Councilman Weigel?
You said 55th Street. From where?
It's on Gateway Drive, starting at 55th Street, going west.
Perfect. Thank you.
So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 2.15?
2.14 is the English Cooley Renewal Master Plan Phase Two.
Good evening, councilperson Dockler and members of the committee. I'm Lisa Botan, Assistant Water Works Director, and with me tonight is Amber Leefers with Advanced Engineering. She serves as the project lead on our master plan renewal project for the English Cooley. So she's here to assist with any detailed questions you may have on the item tonight. You might recall last week, Water Works Director Melanie Parby was here and provided an overview of our Phase One of the English Cooley master renewal. And some of those key findings were kind of what we all knew, that the public agrees with us, that there are some issues at the Cooley, and there's definitely ways to enhance that asset in the city. We also found out that another item that we probably knew is the poor water quality is due to increased nutrients and other pollutants in the sediment, as well as in the water. And thirdly, we did find out, which was the data gap, we were looking for things that we knew to confirm that information and looking for data gaps, and we did realize that some of the existing hydraulic and hydrologic models for the Cooley are very simplistic and quite basic, so they probably aren't going to serve this project going forward as we look to analyze what improvements we can make while keeping in mind that the Cooley is part of our flood protection system with the city of Grand Forks. So for Phase Two, what we're looking at is really developing those models, the hydraulic and the hydrologic models. And in order to do that, we need to increase our data. So we need to do a lot of data gathering, water quality data, flow data, analyze, do some sediment coring, and look at what's in the sediments and where it's at in the Cooley, where it's built up. So we've got at least six, I think, different stations within the urban area of the city that we're going to monitor on a continuous basis, and that will help feed the development of these two models that we're going to look at. And then once we have that model developed, we can run different scenarios, whether it's increasing flow, removing sediment in certain areas, you know, any channel modification that we may or may not want to do, again, keeping in mind working with the Corps of Engineers on, it is part of our flood protection system as well. And I think the other component that's really important and that will be ongoing throughout this process is the public education, outreach, and engagement. We know that there's a lot of things that we can do as citizens to help improve the water quality in the Cooley, leaving riparian buffers, not over fertilizing, taking care of pet waste, all those types of things. And one of the things that Amber told me earlier today that I didn't realize is pretty interesting, well, kind of interesting, is as far as the E. coli and the bacteria in the Cooley, they can actually do marker testing on some of that, so they can determine if it's pet waste, waterfall, like from the ducks and geese and stuff that use the Cooley, or if it's coming from any type of other unsightly things that may be creating bacteria in the Cooley. So we are going to do that as part of this process, so we can kind of target some of that outreach and education as well. And I think also, we can look to kind of see what's been deposited in there too, so it comes from the rural areas as well, so we can look at livestock and that type of thing. So moving forward, we would like you to approve this Phase Two and any associated budget amendments for this renewal project. We're thinking it's about a year, so we'll certainly have an update for you on this project within a year, but can provide any updates along the way as you guys would like to see.
Any questions or comments?
And we do, yeah, and we do have, the task order is attached to the staff report too, that provides a lot of detail on the information that will be gathered and put forth.
We have a motion by Councilman Weber.
I would just, should we look to recuse Ms. Mock?
Yeah, if I could ask to be accused, that would be great.
So then we would need a motion to...
I'll make the motion. Remove. Mock?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Three ayes and one nay to recuse Mock from this current vote for 2.14. So now we have a motion, and do we have a...
I'll second the motion. Do you have a second?
No, but now we do.
Now we do. So can I ask some questions?
Yes.
I mean, the natural flow of the English Cooley through town has a lot of contaminants or whatever from the rural areas that flow through, right? I mean, the alkali flats and a lot of that comes in from the west and is a major impact to the Cooley. Is that right, or is that just my assumptions?
Do you want to... That's been my understanding over the years, and I can let Amber address that too. I know she's looked at it probably in a little more detail recently than I have, so go ahead, Amber.
Good evening, everyone. So there's the diversion structure at Legal Drain 9, and so a lot of that water historically came through the Cooley, but a lot of it now is diverted down the diversion channel and to the Red River. So it's, from a legacy standpoint, a lot of that water has come into the Cooley, and that's, you know, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we had a good hydrologic and hydraulic model, because there's this balance of, okay, do we allow more water through the Cooley to kind of flush that sediment out, or do we continue to have that diverted around the city? And so there's not a, you know, one size fits all, and so we want to make sure that we've got a good model, because of course, like Lisa said, it's part of the flood protection project as well.
And do you look at the tributary? I know the Columbia Mall all drains through that, so does the Laras Center, all of that drains through there, right? And that's all part of this?
Yes. Yep. So whatever drains to the Cooley currently, that will be part of it. So we'll have the part of the watershed, that's the rural area west of the city, and then there'll be, in a much, I would say, more detailed manner, the area that's within the city.
Okay. No, and when would the first public input process formally come?
I don't know when. Yeah. So we were thinking that this part of the study would be more of kind of education in terms of where we're going in the process. Originally, we were going to look at a lot of different solutions at this phase, but given that we have to build a better model first in order to be able to do this, we want to keep the public engaged from, here's what we're doing, here's where we're going, so we keep that momentum going. So I would say starts, I would say probably this spring, and then kind of education throughout the process.
Okay. Well, I'm very encouraged by the work that you're proposing, so, and supportive, so thanks.
Are there any more comments or questions from council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now 2.15. Now, two fifteen.
Two fifteen, sanitation landfill Cell C construction bids.
Good evening, Councilmember Dockler and committee members. We held bids for Cell C construction at the landfill on Friday. And the bids came in really good, as far as we thought on Friday. But upon review, RJ Zaverall and Sons has requested to withdraw their bid. They had a spreadsheet built for some dirt work, and it didn't collect all of their totals and their dirt work totals. So therefore, according to our bid specification, it does allow them to withdraw their bid within twenty-four hours. And so they did meet that, being we opened bids on Friday at two o'clock. So I am requesting that you approve the withdrawal of RJ Zaverall and Sons and award to Vite and Fusion, who were, Vite was a second general contractor bid. And their bid total is five point nine million dollars. The engineer's estimate was five point four million, so roughly eight and a half percent below the actual bid. You need to keep in mind that the engineer's estimate was put together in December. And since that time, the cost of plastics and some of those things have gone up considerably. And talking to the contractors, that's kind of what they had indicated. In the last three months, they have seen some substantial increases in those areas. Not to mention, who knows what price of fuel will be in the future. So I'm looking for approval to award to Vite and Fusion and associated bid bond. That bid bond dollar amount has not been determined yet. We are waiting for some numbers to come in for a cold storage building. Hopefully, we'll have those numbers within the next week, so I can include that dollar amount for the council meeting. And then, a reimbursement resolution is needed so that any costs associated with the Cell C construction and engineering can be expensed to that bond. And I think that's my request.
Does council have any questions or comments?
I'm not very familiar with this ability to withdraw your bid. Is that part of the bid spec, or state law, or how was that put together?
That was part of the bid specification. The package we put out does allow for that in certain circumstances. I did give Ella my copy of what lays out when they can and can't withdraw their bid, and they are within their ability to do that, according to our bid specification. There was roughly a million and a half dollars. Right, Dale? Between the first and second bidders. So it kind of raised a few questions about maybe some items not being included in their bid. And upon investigation by them, they had discovered that a certain portion within their spreadsheet, their total wasn't adding up all the cells within their spreadsheet.
And you were able to verify that?
Were you able to, I'm sorry. Dale handled that part of the process for us, so I will let Dale answer that question.
We didn't physically verify it with them, but we did look at the bid numbers. When you look in there, and if you look at the breakdown of the bids, you can see obviously that the dirt work quantities are way lower, or dollars are way low. And it's kind of like some of the projects in the past, when contractors have come forward and said, hey, we have an error in our bid. We brought that back to you guys, and the city has allowed them to withdraw their bid as long as we can verify that there has been an error in there. And at one and a half million dollars, when we opened it, we said something didn't look quite right. And upon questioning them, they finally found out where the problem was.
Okay, well, it's important to that. I mean, I've seen bids where they've been that much separated, and it wasn't an error.
Right.
And so, my question is just validating this was an error.
Right. No, that's basically the best we can come up with is, you know, that basically, looking at what's there and everything else. And we could go over and ask to see their documentation of it, if you would like. We could do that, too.
Well, if you guys have looked at it, I mean, that was probably the most important thing that you did. I mean, it's easy to come back when you're low, that low, and say you made a mistake. I just want to make sure it was a real mistake.
Right. They would have rather had the job, and they said even if they put their dollars in there, it would still be low. And they're like, can we just have that? I'm like, no. It's not an option.
Do we have any more questions or comments from council?
It seemed like there are many parts to this motion. Do you want it all in one motion? Do we need to look at those separately? So there's forgiving or withdrawing the, that, the motion.
Right.
I mean, the bid.
Correct.
And then, there were at least three or four other parts, I thought, as well.
There is several parts to this, Councilman Weber. Approving the construction bids, awarding it to Vite and to Fusion.
Right.
The bid bond, that not to exceed a certain number that hopefully I will have for you next Monday night. And the reimbursement resolution for the cost being actually, being able to be expensed to that, those bond funds.
Real good. So we're making a motion to move forward, and we'll have all of the information next week. But we're happy taking this as a single motion. I'll move approval.
Sure.
Do you have a second? Councilman Weigl? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Two point sixteen.
Grand Forks Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Project Delivery Method attached are several documents, staff reports, information that's been presented at previous meetings. And also, I'll just point out, there was one citizen comment that was attached to this item.
Councilperson Dockler and members of the committee, the whole. We briefed the Grand Forks Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant several times, including recently with the approval of moving forward with those task orders. What I'm asking for this evening is that, as part of moving forward with the project, and I should also share, we have Mr. Paul Borzmann, who works for Black and Beach. He's helping to support us from an engineering perspective. He's online too, so if you have any specific questions. The last time that this community used, or the City of Grand Forks used the construction manager at risk process was for the Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment Plant. And I think overall, it was a positive and good experience. I think we got, we got good proposals. We were able to break that development into several different bids, and I think we were able to engage many different contractors. And one of the reasons, main reasons why we did it back in that day of, you know, that 2015 to 16, we were concerned that we would not get any or not get any really good contractors bidding on that, because it was still really at the height of the Bakken boom. And so what we determined is a construction manager at risk would allow us to more strategically break that bid into several different components and allow more competitive bids as part of that process. So I think that proved out. The other thing is that we wanted to expedite the bidding process. And if you are here, moving into the 2016 legislative session, when we were working with Representative Sanford and Senator Holmberg, is that it would be good that we get the project moving prior to the session. And by using the CMAR process, we were able to do that. And we were, we were within construction when we showed up at the legislative session in January. And obviously, that paid off with the state's fifty percent cost share of that. So it was a really good story. No project is perfect, but looking back on that project, I think it was, it was the right project to do that way. And a successful project that we should all be proud of. Regarding the wastewater treatment plant, as part of the staff report, you have allowed us to move forward with Phase One. And as you recall, Phase One of the project was really kind of doing some fundamental things of trying to put a generator, reconfigure some piping, doing some site work out at that facility. And the estimated cost of that is, or investment is three point seven, thirteen point seven million. We're sixty percent design on that as part of a design bid build. And those are some pretty straightforward items, so. My, the recommendation I have is that we should just continue on with that process as part of a design bid build. It's already at sixty percent design. From what I've been told, it's going to get bid here this spring and to move forward with that part of the project. The next two phases of what I want to talk, we were going to talk about Phase Two, and that was taking those reactor tanks and refitting and renewing those into these, we call biological nutrient removal systems. And so, they were going to work in parallel instead of sequence. And that was going to allow us to move forward with greater capacity in our four reactor tanks. And as you recall, one of the challenges going through that part of the project was we got to keep the wastewater treatment plant running while we take all those reactor tanks offline one at a time. And so, prior to Fufong coming to us, you know, we had planned to get through the first Phase One developments, and then probably in 2023, get back to start doing these retrofits of the reactor tanks. So we were going to do one a year. And so, starting in 23, we would start. And by the end, by 2026 or 2027, we would have refit all of those reactor tanks as part of that. Finally, the other part I'm going to talk about of this project is this Phase Four. And that was the installation of these integrated fixed film activated sledge, or we call them IFAS. And really, those are going to get embedded into the reactor tanks. And as you recall, that, we talked about that as if we ever needed additional capacity for, we cited an example of an industry coming to town. Not only would we have the reactors refitted, but then we would have these IFAS that would go into the reactors that would give us additional treatment capacity. And so that was kind of our story in 2021. While in 2022, obviously, some things have changed. We have a large industry that is proposing to come to our community in Fufong. And so, we talked about really sliding, or kind of making our timeline really collapse is what we need to do. So instead of starting with a project this year in 2022 and finishing in 2027, we're probably looking at a three-year project instead of a five- to six-year project. So that's one of the challenges with that. So, when we look at those opportunities, talking with Black and Beach and A2S is that we think the CMAR is the best process for us to move forward with the Phase Two and Phase Four parts of the project. It's going to speed up the process. It's going to provide us an opportunity to have some, buy equipment or different technologies in advance. And it's going to allow us to have more bidders as part of this, because it's going to be a really sequenced process. It's going to be a relatively much quicker process for us to get all that done. And we think the CMAR is probably the best delivery process that we can do that, moving the project forward. What I'm asking this evening is that you allow us to move forward with the process of selecting a CMAR. And so, that's what I'm asking for this evening. Just similar to when we did the water treatment plant. We're going to come back with, we're going to advertise, we're going to select, and then we're going to negotiate an agreement, a pre-construction agreement. Right now, the Phase Two and Phase Four items, at best, are probably like at a five percent design. Our goal would be to get a construction manager at risk onboard at thirty percent design. So we got a little bit of time to get a qualified construction manager at risk onboard, which helps us. So over the next few months, really, we're going to be doing a qualifying process. We're going to do some selections, and then we're going to get them onboard as part of a pre-construction, hopefully in and around thirty percent, so we can add some value to the design process. That will help us in the bidding process, that will help us in the construction process. And so we're going to get them involved a little bit sooner than we did with the water treatment plant, which is a good thing. But tonight, like I said, I'm asking to move forward with advertising, move forward with the selection process. This will come back to you at some point, because we're going to ask, presumably, everything goes well, probably sometime this summer. We're going to come back and say, we have a firm that we want to move forward with, that we've selected through a process. We have an initial pre-construction agreement with them to move forward. So we're going to ask you to approve those two things this summer, to move forward as part of the design. Secondarily, similar to the water treatment plant, we'll come back, if everything goes well, and the CMAR is really going well and doing well, we'll come back with a letter, and it'll be a, really a big, big bid proposal with the construction manager at risk to do all the construction of that project. So we're asking today to approve the process to move forward. Later, we'll come back this summer to ask you to pick a firm with a pre-construction agreement. And then later, if things go well, probably this fall or winter, we're going to ask that we move forward with them, potentially, under a construction agreement. And so those would be the three phases, but we got to start here to move this forward. I know we've talked about whether we should be doing these projects, but I think this is really a natural fit for, to do as part of a CMAR process. Most of our projects are done by a design bid build, but this is a really unique project that is going to require some sophistication. It's going to require a lot of integration. And it's going to require a really good team to make sure that we can really get all those four reactor tanks up and going over a shorter amount of time. So with that, I'd be answering any questions, but that's what's in front of you this evening.
Councilman Bean?
No, I'm, Todd probably knows I'm a strong believer in the CM delivery process for a number of reasons. Starting with constructability, cost estimating as you're going along, making sure that we're staying on budget with the project, getting smaller bid packages out so locals could work on the project, and being able to do it on who's most qualified to manage a project, not just who's got the lowest bid. So from a process standpoint, I think this is the best way to go. I assisted on the one at the water treatment plant when we did that. That went well. The contract will come back to us, I'm going to assume, because there will be a fee involved in it and a scope that will be coming, I'm going to assume, later on, including the timelines, et cetera, right?
It will, yep. Councilmember Bean, so that will come back to you. This is kind of initial. And once we select a firm and have that pre-construction, that will come back to you for both of those approvals. And even when we did the water treatment plant, as Mr. Bean worked on too with us, we could even, we could have determined before we not to move forward with the CMAR process, even beyond the pre-construction work. We did decide to move forward as part of the CMAR to do that. But you're going to have another bite at the apple that wants to move forward with the CMAR process. I can't see us not doing it, but you can still back up and say, hey, we paid you for pre-construction services. We just want a design bid, or we just want to bid it as traditional. You'd still have that opportunity as part of that final third phase of this project.
Yeah, and the procurement process for CM is identified in state statute. So we would follow that with a very qualified selection committee that would be doing the project, so.
So you, you have a group that specified what you should do. And so, and like, as Mr. Bean helped serve, not only because he has technical expertise in his background, but also as city council member. So we'd want Mr. Bean to serve on a committee like that, along with some others that could help shepherd this process through.
Could I ask a question?
Please, Vice President Mock.
Todd, are we seeing more and more municipalities using the CMAR process for larger infrastructure projects?
Council Vice President Mock. You know, we haven't used it since the water treatment plant. I don't recall Fargo using it recently, or Bismarck. Not that I'm tracking all their projects, but it's still a more rarely used way to deliver a project. But I think in this case, with the timelines that we have, I think trying to get somebody upfront to do this, I think, makes a lot of sense. Even if you look at the City of Grand Forks, as you know, most of our projects are designed bid built, too. UND uses, if you want to look at an entity by University of North Dakota in the higher education system, uses the CMAR process much more than municipalities do. And so if you look at, on the UND campus, the Nissler School was, I think, done by a CMAR. The Memorial Union was done with a CMAR process as two recent projects that have moved forward in that form and fashion.
And the other question I was going to ask is, with the potential, I guess, with the petition and some uncertainties, will have the opportunity to rebook at this? So if there are changes, we'll be able to react? Is that correct?
Yep. Councilman, Council Vice President Mock, yep. I think the process I've laid out, and I probably have more time than is, will be needed, but if we get your approval on the 21st, which would be next week, Monday, we'd start advertising that, advertise and select probably in that April-May timeframe, April-May-June. And then probably come back sometime this summer with an agreement in a firm. So I suspect between now and this summer, there's going to be a lot of things that are going to happen in between. So in the meantime, we're just, the only thing we're really out is that we're going to have to have some engineering support to set up the RFPs and do part of the selection process. So we'll have some funding that's wrapped up in that, but we won't have anything major approved above and beyond going through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Weber?
Sure, thanks. Todd, we're going to be talking about this and a lot of other issues over and over, over the next probably year or two. over and over, over the next probably year or two. And we'll learn a lot more about what wastewater treatment facilities. So I don't have, I have questions, but if it's okay, I'd like to just have kind of a conversation with you quickly to, to make sure that I'm kind of understanding some of the basics. First, the need for the wastewater treatment facility redo, this work, this was needed independent of the Fufong project. We were, we were going to have to do this. You, you came to us long before we had first heard about Fufong, that this was going to be a necessary project for the city.
Yeah.
However, it, it isn't completely independent of Fufong. Because of the, the development agreement, we're looking at the possibility of expediting this process. And this expedited process is, is one of the main reasons why we're looking at a CMAR, because if we're doing design bid build, we, we can do that over time. The compressed timeframe makes it nicer, creates benefits with the CMAR project. And also with this expedited process, can you give us an idea of how much increased cost we'd, we'd be looking at? That's one question I have. I've got a few others, but first of all, just, just that.
Yep. Councilmember Weber, I agree with all those notes. Obviously, we're already at 60% design of phase one. That's that $13.7 million. Phase two, I, it is a more expedited process, phase two, which is, you know, refitting these four reactors. I think an argument could be made, I may have come to recommend, even if we had a slower timeframe, to, I think the CMAR process really will work well, better for that, because we've got to keep the facility in service while we, we take them offline. I think it really will work well, better with a, with a CMAR process. So that 13.7, and then phase two with refitting, that's 31.3. So that's that $45 million that we've been talking about, that we're already a, a part of what we're going to do for the wastewater treatment plant. So when we, we add those two together, that's that $45 million that we've gone over several times as part of the, the Fufong development itself. The other thing that we, we talked about is it's, our, our facility is 20 years old, and so it was time to not only renew it, but try to expand it so we have more ability to treat wastewater at that facility. And so that's part of, that's two. It's not only renewal, but it's, there's some expansion ability as part of that. And the beautiful part of that wastewater treatment plant is we're trying to, under the same existing footprint with new technology, we're trying to expand our ability to treat wastewater more than what we had before without adding more reactor tanks. We're just trying to use what we have and make it better and allow us to treat more wastewater. We're also, as you recall, I think at the end of last year, about $31 million came off our debt service. So we had paid off that $31 million as part of the initial build of the wastewater treatment plant. And I think if you look over the next five years, we're going to take off another, I think, another $7 million. So by the time this project gets done, or near that time, we'll have had $38 million come off of debt service. So even though we're adding the $45 million in addition, keep in mind, we're, we've already paid off $38 million. And if you look at the time value of money, when we started this plant in, you know, the late 90s and early 2000s, you can see where, you know, we're just kind of renewing this asset and expanding it within the existing footprint. We talked about, we talked about, as you recall, with this $45 million renewal and upgrade, you know, what's going to be an impact on, on users, whether they're residential, commercial? And that's where we showed you those, looking at about a 3% increase over that time period for existing users. And that was all, this was all pre-Fufong that came in, because we were, we showed you some financial analysis where a lot of the debt service was coming off. We're going to add some more on. In the meantime, we've added East Grand Forks in as a user. We've added, you know, Red River Biore Refinery in as a user. So we have had, we've used a lot of our excess capacity over these last 10 years, but we've also increased our revenue streams with, with users like that too. So our, our wastewater treatment plant truly has become a regional facility, much more than it was when it was first thought of, you know, 20 years ago.
So my question was, is this expedited process going to cost more than the, the six-year process we'd originally envisioned? It wasn't that simple a matter. There's other benefits from this and other reasons to go with the compressed timeframe. Aside from any cost differentials, are there any other downsides to, to the compressed time schedule? Or are there only upsides? What do we anticipate there? And Mr., is it Burisma?
Yeah.
May, I don't know. I'll, I'll keep talking to you, but he's certainly welcomed away at any time also.
Sounds good. Yeah, please take that, Mr. Burisma.
Burisma. Thank you, Mr. Burisma.
So, so I take your, your, your one question, and Mr. Phelan also answered this, is that when you asked about additional costs, you know, you would be, you would be paying a, a markup fee for the CMAR. And in commonly, they might be about 5%, 6% of the total project cost that you would pay for the CMAR. You could construe that as a, an added cost to the project. I think many people in the industry, certainly CMAR contractors, would say that they would look for ways to value engineer, to look for, to find other cost savings in the project that would offset that. But there would be a, a certain fee that you do pay a, a CMAR that would be on top of the contractors. So I just, I wanted to add that. And then as I understood your, your second question, you were looking for other synergies that would happen with a more expedited schedule? Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, synergies, so upsides or, or downsides to the compressed time schedule? Sure.
So it will be a compressed time schedule because it, and that's, that's both a good and bad thing. Just to kind of put this in context, you know, this, this will be many tens of millions of dollars project. And if you would ask most people, including people who've just been through the water treatment plant expansion in Grand Forks, what would be a typical process, design and construction process for something like this? Maybe the answer would be two years for design, three years for, for construction. We are attempting to have this being done by the end of 2024. That is approximately 30, 31 months from right now. That will mean a very, a very pressed schedule. The upside of that is that you stay efficient, the design process and the construction process stays very efficient because you need to make decisions quickly and just simply move through them. The downside is moving through a schedule that quickly is it's, it's a stress factor. It will be a stress factor for city staff, for the CMARS, executing this amount of work and that amount of time is akin to a strength, not a, not a long distance run. And, you know, I think, I think this city may feel some of that stress. But at the same time, you're moving through decisions and you're moving through construction in a fairly expedited fashion.
Thanks. That's all very helpful. At this time, Mr. Burisma is, is here just as a consultant. They could possibly be the CMAR that we hire? No, they, they don't do that. But we've worked with Black and Beach before, great national reputation on projects like that.
And obviously, we've worked with A2S on a lot of our wastewater treatment, water treatment, obviously. What we requested is that we would add Black and Beach because they have a more of a national or international perspective on this, and they're going to add a lot of horsepower to trying to get this done, because they've worked on a lot of large projects that have been expedited. And so Mr. Burisma and the Black and Beach team have been added to that. I suspect when we get to doing the RFPs with construction managers, sometimes they have like a, a general contractor with a civil engineering type group. So there'll probably be some combinations of that, but since Black and Beach is, is our, kind of our national perspective, they'll be on our team. But you could, you could probably see other teams may partner with a construction management group with an engineering group as part of that CMAR process.
If I could be so bold, then when Mr. Burisma tells us things, he's not trying to sell us something down the road. He's giving us his expertise in this, in this area.
Yes. He's given us his, his dispassionate, objective.
Arms length, yeah, good. The, when I asked earlier about increased cost or, or other things, you mentioned that what we're getting here is actually even better than what we'd been talking about earlier. And, and better in terms of increased capacity. But what are the environmental impacts of our wastewater treatment processes? And will they be changed by this enhanced process and, and product?
I would, I'd hand that over to Mr. Burisma. Do you maybe ask some, maybe some changes in the treatment and the technology? And compared to what we have, obviously, to what we're going to get is some of the improvements that we're going to see.
So will we be putting, returning cleaner water than we would have otherwise?
I think what we want to look, as you recall, not only were we looking at trying to renew the asset, expand the asset, we're also looking at future regulations. And so that really wraps in the, the kind of the threesome of this whole thing of the regulatory processes. We know generally treatment standards only increase. And so we've done our, our mechanical treatment back 20 years ago was a, was a heck of an advancement from our lagoon system, okay? We still use our lagoon system for some finishing sometimes. Sometimes we use it for overflow during large rain events. But in the meantime, over those 20 years, we've gone to direct discharge from our wastewater treatment plant, which is a terrific advancement for us. But with this new facility, it's going to set us up so that we can have advanced treatment that we don't have currently.
I'm encouraged by that. One of the concerns with the Fufong plant is environmental problems. Of course, when I drove here tonight, I, I had an environmental impact. The, the road projects that we've approved tonight will have an environmental impact. But some parts of this project actually will have environmental benefit. I think the Fufong project, by bringing it here rather than trucking corn to much more distant processing plants, will also have some environmental benefit. There's, there's always upside and downside to any project of, of this size. So I'm encouraged to hear that this, this enhanced wastewater treatment facility actually improves our environmental impact in this way. That, that's all I've got for now. Thanks. We'll, we'll get to, to talk about this many more times, right?
We will. And maybe I'll make one more note is, as part of the review that you approved, I guess, with that task order, we are looking at an area in and around, you know, JR Simplot, Philadelphia Macaroni, Red River Biore, finding the Fufong, that even though we're focused on the wastewater treatment plant, we are considering as part of our review, are, is there some strategy we should add as part of the, putting some pretreatment elements nearer where the industry is? And so that will be part of the review is maybe not, consideration that maybe not all treatment has to go to the wastewater treatment. Maybe there's some smart things we can do near the source of, of treating the wastewater. So we'll see how that all pans out. We have really great engagement with JR Simplot. What, what a heck of a corporate citizen we have in JR Simplot. They're looking at making some improvements to their wastewater pretreatment system too. So we're, we're maybe at the same time, we're not sure if that's all going to work out. But we're engaging JR Simplot along, along with Fufong and other, and Red River Biore Refiner so that we can improve the treatment capacity and, and quality in our, in our community.
And one final thing, Mr. Phelan, thanks. Thanks for this conversation. This is independent of the Fufong plant, but it's also caught up in that, that long process. The development agreement we have, we, we've been talking about the, the 20 contingencies, the 20 points. One of the major on that list, one of the major items on that list is wastewater treatment, water in general. And, and so this is an important part of what we continue to investigate and, and do diligence on, do our due diligence on.
That's very true. You know, we, we showed you the Fufong layout, their concept plan. On their own site, they're going to have wastewater pretreatment systems. So we're going to review those. And, and just to further ensure that they'll perform the way that we want them to perform, because as you recall, as part of the development agreement, they are planning for their wastewater streams that come to the Grand Forks to be under industrial, within domestic limits, which means they're going to do a lot of treatment on site to bring it underneath industrial loads to make it domestic. So that helps us a lot. We're going to verify that just to make sure, because they're, they're just, they're going to deliver 3 million gallons per day. We've got to make sure that quality is going to be there too. So there's a lot of review in, in that vein regarding with Fufong. And we have to know this, you know, we certainly have, we're used to potato waste that goes through our wastewater systems. We're used to Red River Biore Refiner, and that's a combination. That's, that's potato waste, and it's sugar beet waste that they're doing. And obviously, they've had some, some struggles regarding that. But now we're going to have corn waste. So we want to look at all of those factors and how we're going to treat that, how, how they're all going to, you know, looking longer term, how they're going to pretreat at their own facilities. But now we're going to add corn waste in there too. So we want to be really smart and, as part of this process. And that's why we hire smart folks like Paul Burisma and his team that have, that have been part of design teams or review teams with wet corn mills and other industries. And that's why we went down to Fort Dodge. That's why we went down to Blair, Nebraska, to see what they have there. And what we saw in those communities is they're ager business communities, similar to Grand Forks. And certainly, there are day-to-day challenges when you're doing big things like that, but they've been able to manage it. And Grand Forks has managed a lot of wastewater waste from ager business, and this is just one more entity we want to be really smart about.
We're, we're an agricultural regional center, and, and that, that industry creates waste. And so one of the responsibilities for our community is to address that. And so that's what we're trying to do here. My thanks to everyone for, for your patience and letting me have this conversation. I'll, I'll move approval.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Weigold. Councilman Bean?
I have a few more questions. I want to make sure I'm clear on this. Todd, we talked about phase one being the 13.7, and then the phase two would be the expansion or the growth of that. That will come down the road. So right now, we're kind of in the pre-construction phases of, of trying to evaluate what we have and where we're going. Is that right?
You are correct.
And, and that we will get into the, well, one of the, one of the thoughts that I had from years ago, maybe I'm wrong, is the current plant was oversized. And you've talked, we've picked up some, but it was quite a bit oversized. And, and I know earlier you talked about actually the process of, I don't remember how you went back and forth versus going through the whole whatever treatment process. Is that right? There was, there's a significant change in what you're looking at doing now that'll be a part of this evaluation?
Yes. If, if you recall, with the reactors, right now, they kind of work in series where you got to go from one to the next to the next. The, each of these reactors are going to be an entity unto themselves. So that's the design change. And by doing that and adding more treatment capacity within those, we're going to have a further capacity. It's going to operate more efficiently now by doing what we're doing. And I, I know Fufong's been brought up, but if you look at phase four as part of the, that's that IFAS system that was for future industry. So when we talked about Fufong paying their fair share, they're certainly going to pay their, their share of the regular wastewater treatment plant. But they also are, phase four is really for them. Phase four with those, that IFAS system is really going to be placed into those reactors. And so when we talked about, when we talk about Fufong taking a look at what they, they need for their, that's part of, you know, directly attributed to this new industry. So when we said, if a new industry comes along, when we talked about the IFAS system under phase four, well, that, that industry came soon after we, we were talking about it. And that, and that's the Fufong Wet Corn Mill.
So if, if I could, I, I see that, and we've talked about that in the past, advancements in, in the treatment process itself. Are we going to be addressing phosphate now?
Phosphate's on the horizon. So this will, I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Burisma. Right now, you know, certainly we could do chemical additions, but I think this sets us up better for phosphorus. And obviously, that's something that we're not regulated right now by the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. But that's probably the next regulatory process that we're going to be kind of levered on, you know? And you should all know, most of the phosphorus that goes into the Red River and Red Lake River are coming from the fields, right? From fertilizer. But because, you know, not every farmer has a point source permit to discharge into the river, even if 4%, 5% of the phosphorus problem in the Red River Valley as wastewater treatment plants, we're going to get 100% of the regulations. And so that's kind of, that, but that's just the game we play. If you have a permit with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, they, they can regulate us. It's hard to regulate farming practices. And so it's going to be a challenge for us. And obviously, we, fertilizer's a big deal up and down the Red River Valley, and that's causing, you know, issues and with Canada and Minnesota and North Dakota. So maybe I turn it over to Mr. Burisma, if he could maybe talk about phosphorus and kind of current situations of that.
Sure. It's a, it's a very good question. Phosphorus is probably driving more investments in wastewater treatment across the Midwest, across large parts of the country than any other item. A lot of times, phosphorus in typical domestic wastewater might be around 10 milligrams per liter if not, if not treated. A lot of states are headed towards a limit of more than 1 milligram per liter. And so North Dakota's not And so North Dakota's not there yet, but it will go there in the coming decade or so. And so part of the evaluation we'll do, as Mr. Phelan said, is with IFAS, starting to set ourselves up for better phosphorus treatment and also designing reactors, designing processes that we can modify them with relative simplicity to achieve more phosphorus removal when that time is appropriate for the discharge permit. As Mr. Phelan said, the typical or a common kind of brute force way of phosphorus removal is to use chemicals. A much more elegant, long-term, cost-effective way of phosphorus removal is biological treatment. And so part of the designs that we're looking at will be anticipating how to do biological phosphorus removal in the next generation of wastewater treatment for these improvements.
I just bring that up. I know we're not regulating it, but others are regulating it. And it'd be worth at least considering be ahead of the game instead of having to come back afterwards and modify it and do what's right for the environment, basically, as we look at that. Even if it's a small percentage, I'd like to see that we're doing that. One of the things that I know we're, well, I guess I think everybody's experiencing, and I'm glad to see the bid prices we got here for some of the underground work. But what I've seen in inflation and construction escalation costs can be up 7% to 10% right now for what's happening with the economy, what's going on around the world, the availability of fuel. All of that is significant. And I'll be very surprised if these prices stay where we're at. I think you're going to see a fairly significant increase. I don't know if it'll come back down or what will happen depending on the future, what's going to happen. Normally, a lot of times, they go up and they stay up. They just don't continue to go up. So I think we have to be prepared for these costs to increase from what I've been able to see for some time. The other one thing I was wondering about is, is there any possibility of starting decommissioning of any of our lagoons that would be associated with this, especially with those closest to the airport?
Councilmember Bean, I think that's a very good question. You know, because we've been direct discharging, and I think if you looked at our, I'll call it our westernmost lagoons last summer, we're generally dry. And so those were the ones that we were going to plan to decommission. So that was, that's about a third of our two-thirds footprint. I think we have like 1,300 acres of lagoons. And so I think over time, we've, over last year, we've proven that, you know, with direct discharge, maintaining probably about two-thirds of our lagoon system, that we can probably take that off, the one-third offline. And I think that went very well last, last summer. Am I right? I should call on Ms. Button in here, she knows more than I do. So.
No, that was.
Let me have Lisa answer that question. She was more on the scene of the crime out there, and she has more firsthand knowledge of that. That was always our goal. And you know, one of you, here's, I think what the city of Grand Forks should be quite proud of. Back in the 1950s and 60s, this city, because the land wasn't very good, we put an airport, a lagoon system and a landfill together out there, kind of a Bermuda Triangle of uses, right? Now, over the last, I don't know, I've been here a couple decades plus, and involved some, the city of Grand Forks, single-handedly, has done more to undo that than anyone else with moving the landfill, looking at our wastewater treatment plant, our mechanical, then going to direct discharge to try to reduce the scope of our lagoons. And so when, when some people say, what are we doing about the problem? Well, to be frank, the city of Grand Forks has been the one entity doing something and investing a lot of money to undo what was done. And so I think you should, as city council and as city of Grand Forks, we should be very proud of what we've done to really mitigate the risks that were created way back when, where others were on the sidelines saying something should be done. The city of Grand Forks has been the entity actually doing something. So with that, I'd hand it off to Lisa to kind of give you an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I don't have a lot to add. I would, I agree, yes, the, those westernmost lagoons were fairly dry last summer. A couple of things, we were in a drought, so that was part of the reason. And then it was an interesting dilemma that we're still studying and working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, like Ms. Parby had the update a few weeks ago. When we, when those lagoons were fairly dry, we attracted a different type of water, not waterfall, but bird. So there was some different issues out there with different types of shorebirds in that area. So at one point, they did ask us to put a little water in there, the airport did, because we were dealing with a different type of bird. So we're still working through some of that as well. So it's not as sometimes straightforward as just, you know, having them be dry and they're done. So that's kind of a thing we're working through as well and studying, looking, looking at that going forward. But yes, they were fairly dry last summer, and that is something we're continuing to look at, is how we can get those fully decommissioned. And I'm sure, as you know, Mr. Bean, there's additional processes that go with that since there was wastewater in those, those lagoons as well. So, but thank you.
And maybe, Todd, my last question, please, for now, is a lot of concerns on the Red River Bio Refinery and the odors and the treatment that was impacted there. I'm assuming, I think everybody needs to know what we're doing differently this time to make sure that that doesn't happen, and how the work we're doing now will contribute toward a better solution.
I think that's a very good question. I may call on Ms. Button because she's been really working hand in hand with that situation. I think with Red River Biore Refinery, we did, they have an industrial pre-treatment permit. We had memorandums that kind of spelled out their capacities and those sorts of things. And so the further step that we're doing with Fu Fang is that we're having third-party verification. And so essentially, that we didn't do the third step with, with Red River Biore Refinery. We had all the technical memos. We had an industrial pre-treatment. But to be frank, I don't know if it was their wastewater pre-treatment system that was undersized, but something wasn't what it was supposed to be if you looked at the tech memos. If anyone's to be blamed at the city of Grand Forks, we didn't authorize additional, we didn't pay for an additional third-party review with Red River Biore Refinery. Perhaps we should have, but we didn't during that time period. And so right now, we're dealing with that. So when we talk about our wastewater treatment plant, we're considering, you know, how much more can we make more robust, robust our wastewater treatment plan? Or should we look at something in and around JR Simplot and the Red River Biore Refinery area? We're looking at strategies, knowing that we are where we are now. And you know, at the end of the day, we can point fingers all day long, but we want Red River Biore Refinery to be successful. They have two important customers that they're taking their waste. One is American Crystal Sugar. The other one is JR Simplot. And we want them to be successful long-term. And certainly, they've had a tough start, but you know, we have, we hope to be around here for the next 100 years as a city plus. And so we are trying to find some solutions as part of what Mr. Boersma's working on. And maybe I'd ask Ms. Button, since she's been working with them kind of day-to-day and can give you an update on where we're at there.
Thank you again, Mr. Phelan. Yes, I think Todd pretty much summed it up there. We did have the technical memorandums and all the information in place from them saying how their treatment system was going to work. And then, as if you, as you recall, when they were just getting ready to start up is when we also had the COVID shutdowns. And so a lot of their commissioning folks couldn't get here from Europe, and it just, I think the whole process probably didn't, their pre-treatment system probably didn't get started appropriately, if that's the right word I want to use, for them because they didn't have the correct people here to start it up for them. And then I think kind of just had some snowball effects on how that pre-treatment system was supposed to be operating. We have been working with them diligently over the last, you know, year here or so in conjunction with our partners at the state as well. We meet with them weekly on where they're at, and they're currently going through another mini shutdown upgrade, and they're, they're looking at additional capacity. They did reduce their production because they knew that they weren't quite, obviously, where they needed to be. But they're definitely, we've seen a lot of improvements at our lift stations and in their discharges, probably since, you know, maybe last August going forward. They've made some definite improvements in their pre-treatment as well as knowing that they had to invest some capital. So they themselves have, you know, reduced their production as well to keep, to keep in compliance with their permits and making sure we're in compliance with ours. And I should note that through all of this process, the city of Grand Forks never violated our NPDES permit with the state at the wastewater treatment facility. So we did keep that in check as well.
Todd, what was that? You did the tech memo, and then what was the next second piece?
Yeah, the other thing is that we do have an approved industrial pre-treatment permit for them with, that notes the standards that we developed based upon the technical memorandum. And obviously, our engineer was A to S, and so, you know, helping support Lisa and her team. So certainly, from the tech memos, from that review, they, it ends up with an industrial pre-treatment permit that they have, you know, parameters, right? And so the third thing we didn't do is that we didn't go through those tech memos and had a third-party review their, their facility, their pre-treatment, verifying all those numbers. And we did not do that third-party. And certainly, with Fu Fang is much larger than Red River Biore Refinery. And so we want to make sure, moving forward with agri businesses, that, that we do have that kind of review. I would say with, in a similar vein, JR Simplot, they have an anaerobic digester. And you know, when you work with groups like JR Simplot, you're used to a level of, of design and those sorts of things. And so in a similar vein, they, they improved their system back in the late 2000s, early 10s, and they went from an aerobic system to an anaerobic system. So that was another issue that kind of used up some of our capacity. Simplot moving to an anaerobic system, needed some additional treatment at our wastewater treatment plant. East Grand Forks coming into Grand Forks with 8,000 people. And then finally, the Red River Biore Refinery. But even with JR Simplot, when they built that, certainly, again, they have a technical memorandum to us. We have an industrial pre-treatment permit with them. We didn't, in that case, back in those times, we didn't do a third-party review of their, of their system too. They are planning to do some, when we met with Simplot, do some upgrades to their system. It's about 10 years old, so they're going to do some improvements with their facilities. We'll be part of the review process of that, and we'll probably take, do some more due diligence. And when we do due diligence, we try to do it in a way where it's win-win. Whatever review we want, we want to make sure it's a better design than when it started. So it's good for, for the corporate entity, and it's good for the city of Grand Forks. Finally, I know people have asked questions about Red River Biore Refinery, maybe Maureen can say that. As you recall, their startup, they had some bills. I came to you and say, you know, could we work out a pay plan? And we did some various things that you approved as city council. And people have asked about, you know, are they up to date? And maybe Maureen could update you on that issue too.
Certainly. Thank you, Todd. Members of the committee, they do currently have a bill in good standing. There was, if you remember, a billing that went back to an approval at an adjusted rate in a payment plan. The billing at that time was about $588,000 that they were going to make payments over time along with their existing bills going forward. We had a modified plan with some other balance after that. Everything, what I can report now is, the only bill outstanding with, with that account currently is their current bill, which is the March bill. So they have paid up and are in good standing.
We've had very good discussion. I think it's been good to know. I mean, the real reason why we're here is to find out if you wanted to go to a CMR, right?
Yes. But I, I think it spells out that wastewater treatment is pretty important for a community. And so we worry about a lot of things, but without our wastewater treatment plant, this community would be an entirely different community. And we should be really thankful to people like Lisa and those dedicated wastewater treatment plant operators and collection because they do a lot of work behind the scenes for the greater good of this community that, that we're not here on a Monday night talking about this because there's some really dedicated folks that are doing terrific things out there in all the public works and waterworks fields out there. And we should be really thankful for all the great public facilities that we have, from our solid waste landfill to our treatment plants, to all the infrastructure and the men and women that really help service that. And I don't get to see this as much as I used to, but the dedication of people showing up at midnight, 2:00 in the morning to make things happen is very humbling. So we've had some tough meetings here, but just so you know that we have some dedicated people that are doing terrific things and keep everything running. And it is quite humbling to see all the dedication we have in the city of Grand Forks. The easiest thing for an operator, we talked, Mr. Boersma talked about pressure or stress on operators and operations, is that we have a team, the easiest thing for a wastewater treatment plant operator to say, hey, I can't, I don't want to, this is, this Fu Fang project's a big project. We're going to have to treat the wastewater. But we have operators that are, are willing to take on challenges, to do more work than they necessarily would have to do. That's pretty extraordinary in our day and age that we have that kind of dedicated workforce because we're not going to pay our wastewater treatment plant operators anymore because we treat 3 million gallons more wastewater from Fu Fang. And so the kind of dedication and the can-do thing, despite them being concerned, right? And but the great thing with Lisa and Melanie should know this, is they, they bring the operators on the team for designs. So when we, we get an outcome of a, Mr. Boersma-led design, our operators have been part of the design group and are really integrated into the process. So this is serious business, and we do know it's very serious business.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Are we ready to take a vote?
If I could, just, just one more quick. Thanks, thanks. Mr. Bean, thanks for bringing up the issue of phosphates. I mean, that's, that's our main issue in the English Cooley, which we were talking about earlier. This is important. In fact, not from our city, but I believe it's a major contributor to algal blooms in lake country as well. So phosphates are important. Most of us don't think about that on a day-to-day basis. Tonight, and this discussion that we've had, and it's dragged on a little while now, not as long as some of the discussions we've had over the last several weeks. And this hasn't made as, made for as exciting TV. We've probably lost some viewers at this point. But in so many ways, this is incredibly important. And I just want to touch on a couple of points to make sure that I'm understanding correctly as we move forward. The Red River Bio Refinery, you've said, did not have the same level of scrutiny and the third-party review that Fu Fang is going to have. Also, I don't know that I really heard it, previously had heard it articulated exactly this way. We have some other industries in our town that produce a lot of waste, some odors, some things, and the Red River Bio Refinery was actually treating a lot of that. I've responded to many emails, as of all the council members, every day for the last quite a while. And one of the issues is, oh, we're going to bring in this plant. Actually, the work that we've been doing has improved the situation at some of those other plants. And even Red River Bio Refinery, with some of the challenges they've had, they're helping us to address some of those ongoing challenges. The last point, and then I'm ready to vote. Mr. Phelan, thanks for the things you've said about staff across our system. I would like to recognize that we also have a city administrator who's willing to go above and beyond, and this has been a lot of extra work for you as well and for all of your staff. I'm ready to vote. Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to information only, three, 3.1.
3.1 is a COVID update that's provided for your review. And 3.2, voting location update. If you don't mind, I'll just say a few words about that. There is an attachment to the voting location update. A couple of things I just wanted to point out. As you very well know, the city general election is Tuesday, June 14th. We have an agreement with the county to run that on our behalf. They also choose the number and locations of the voting centers. They did recently meet to approve four voting locations within the city. Attached, you will see those locations being the Alara Center, the Icon Arena located at 1060 47th Avenue South, Home of Economy at 1508 North Washington, and Holy Family at 1018 18th Avenue South. The nice thing with the election this year is you don't have to worry about which of those locations you go to to vote. You can vote at any of those four locations. So I think that will solve a lot of the confusion associated with having those multiple votes. having those multiple voting centers. So I'm happy to see that change was made. This is information that is included on an election page that was, that is included now on the city's website. So if you just put in a search for election, you'll see that pop up in this, along with other information about the particulars of the election day is on there. The location of early voting has been set at the Alara Center. That runs from Tuesday, June 7 through Saturday, June 11, which is the week prior to Election Day. The weekdays, it is open for early voting from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and that Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Ballots are available for absentee May 5, and then if it's military, April 25. Those applications, if you do request to vote absentee, can be found at the county or the Secretary of State. If you have any other questions that I can hopefully answer, I am available for those questions.
Yes, Councilman Weber?
Thank you. I've been critical of the curtailment of voting precincts in the past. So I'm pleased to see this, these, what seem like improvements in voting availability. Thanks.
Which brings us to item four. German, is there a motion to close? Councilman Weigle and Councilman Weber seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Thank you and have a good night.